...of the regional -- how's that? Just the planning board, the former regional planning board. Old habits. Welcome. It's the January 21 reorganization meeting as well as a regular meeting.
I have it.
I left it there.
Do I have it?
No, I think I --
On the statement.
No.
It was on me.
Hmm?
It was on me, right in front of you.
Okay.
Which statement?
It was the opening statement.
I have it. I bet it's right here.
The magic paper which allows us to continue the opening statement. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of its time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2016 Agenda Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official Bolton Board at Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the ninth day of November 2015. Legal notice of the adoption of said resolution appeared in the November 13, 2015 edition of the Princeton Packet. Before I turn the meeting over to the Chair of the Nominating Committee, I want to announce that the oath of office has been signed and I will complete the acknowledgement by members Timothy Quinn, Cecilia Burge, and Fern Spruill. Welcome duly sworn in. Ms. Capzoli, you have a report of the nominating committee?
Thank you. Yes, the nominating committee met on January 5th and you all were alerted by email. And that consists of Mr. Quinn and I, and Wanda Gunning was also there. And we nominate Wanda Gunning for Chair and Galliman for Vice Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to elect the proposed Chair and Vice Chair?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to our new officers.
And thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. And I want to thank Alan for finding statements so promptly.
It's a quick meeting.
Yes. In fact, my first announcement is that for our next meeting, which is the 4th of February, we're going to have Mr. Porter do a legal session for us on ethics and conflict of interest. And it should be a very interesting session. The packet this time was sent entirely by email, so I assume that most of you got it? Good. Okay. The first item to be voted on is the appointment of the Planning Board Attorney. I don't think -- I think if you all have it, I won't read this. It's to reappoint the firm of Miller, Porter, and Mueller. Could I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next resolution is the appointment of the Planning Board Secretary. And surprisingly enough, it's Eileen Caturnio, as it has been the last number of years. Could I have a motion for that, please?
Julie Capzoli, move to approve.
Thank you. So second?
Second, Jenny Kremiller.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is the appointment of Planning Board Special Counsel. And we're not asking Karen Casey to serve as Special Counsel under certain circumstances. Could I have a motion for that?
Melinda Trautman, move.
I give a long wait, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have two resolutions. One is the resolution for special meetings, how they're set up, and a resolution for fixed meetings. Why don't we take these two together? Somebody like to move theirs?
Julie Capzoli, I move to approve.
Okay, it's been moved by -- Julie, is there a second?
David Cohen, second.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Under the notices of where the special meeting should be, I wonder if we have reex -- can anybody hear me? No. Have reexamined that list of publicity. For instance, I don't -- does anybody listen to WHWH anymore? It's situated in West Windsor, and when I turned it in today, it was entirely in Spanish. So I wasn't sure whether it was in Princeton or not. The Trenton -- I guess the Trenton Times and the Trentonian, I guess, I just wonder if in our -- it's probably Council rather than us that needs to be -- that I should be addressing this to. But it -- does this seem like an appropriate list of public entities, given that there are now any number of web addresses that people in this town consult frequently? I don't know what they read. I don't know why Comcast Media should be the one. Anyhow, I raise -- I'm not going to complain about that at this point. I'm just raising the question.
Yeah. Gail, just point out that this is on the back of the special meeting.
Oh, that's the special meeting one? Yeah, it's on the --
Yes, right. Everybody's looking to see where it is.
Oh, it's number three under the --
Three B.
-- items on the special meetings.
I don't know if Ms. Kremiller remembers, but I feel like it's a different list for Council.
Or else I didn't notice there either, but I agree that it's worth looking into.
Right. I think we could ask staff to look into this and look at the Council's list and come back with a suggestion of what's a more current list. And I thank you, Gail, for pointing this out. And so can we approve this now and then hope it will be amended to be more current? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, minutes. You were sent three sets of minutes by email. The first set is June 4th of last year. Any amendations, additions, corrections? Anyone?
Yeah, I apologize for not bringing this up sooner, because I have questions about these and the next set. There was a comment, now I just got my computer. There was a comment that I just thought, I wanted to clarify where, on page three -- wait, which date is this? The 4th?
This is June 4th, 2015. Page three.
One of the comments was, it's just a bullet point, and it says, "Elimination of redevelopment as a tool for affordable housing. Mr. Solo advised that redevelopment is one of the tools established by COA." And I didn't know if it was, I don't remember anyone opposing the -- who was, I mean, I couldn't tell if that was somebody on the planning board who was suggesting that we eliminate redevelopment as a tool for affordable housing, because that's what it sounds like. And I didn't remember anyone saying anything like that. And I don't know if anybody else remembers anything about that or cares about if we should clarify it. But I thought it makes it look like someone on the planning board was against, I mean, wanted to eliminate redevelopment as a tool for affordable housing.
There must have been a comment, or probably wouldn't be.
What the discussion was, if you want to strike it, I don't have a problem with it.
Do you want to table these minutes?
Or do you just want to strike that one? I mean, it's only a bullet. If you want to strike the bullet, I don't see that that being a problem.
Okay.
Okay. So we will, you'd want to strike the whole bullet or just? I would like to leave Mr. Solo advised that redevelopment isn't one of the tools established by COA in there, so that we just keep that in mind.
Yeah, that seems right. Take out elimination of redevelopment as a tool.
Right. Okay, with that change, would somebody like to?
I'll move it. Kremiller.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Melinda Trautman, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next set is December 3rd of last year. And any additions, corrections, amendations? Anyone?
Yeah, that one too. That was on page four. It says that I made the motion to endorse the ordinance, and I don't think I did, especially because I was against it and I voted against it. So I don't, I mean, it's true that I could have, but I wondered if, it seems like I would remember if I had done that, and I don't remember that. But unfortunately, I didn't, I should have thought about it ahead of time and looked at the video. But does anybody else remember making the motion? Because it was a motion that the majority passed it and the minority lost, and I was part of the minority.
I think that we really should table these and check that one out, because it's important. So why don't we table these till the next meeting?
There's a motion. Yeah. Opposed? Yeah. That's what it could have been.
So, we need to check the tape to get that one right. All right, the last one is the special meeting of December 16. And this was all, I think, approval of minutes and findings of fact. Any amendations, corrections, additions?
Julie Capzoli, I move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Kremiller.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That brings us to the discussion for this evening. This is the Hunt School's request for a zone change. I'm going to ask Mr. Solo to take it.
Before he starts, I'm going to recuse myself from this. I don't, it's probably not essential, but a close member of my family lives adjacent to this site, and it's probably better that I not participate.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Solo, you're presenting. Do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully to the extent you present testimony?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. As the Chair had indicated, this is a request for rezoning by the Hunt School. In your package, you received a cover memo from myself and Mr. Burge, which sort of outlines what I'm going to go over in just a minute. That package also included a letter from Mr. Goldman, the attorney for the Hunt School. That explains a little bit more about their request. And then there are a series of maps showing you the existing zoning, the lot in question, and the Hunt School campus. The Hunt School is requesting a zone change for a 1.6 acre lot. It's designated as Lot 22 on our tax map, that's currently in the R2 zone. Let me orient you. This is a composite tax map sheet of 93 and 92. Do I need to label these, Alan?
Sure.
Okay, it'll be, I guess, PB1. And what this shows you is, at the bottom of the map, this is Route 206. The blue line is the Stony Brook. Edgar Stone is this street. Wynett Road and Russell Road, just to orient you. What I've also done on this map is, in yellow is the existing E4 zone, and you can see how it runs. This is the Hunt School campus, which is on either side of Russell Road. They have some dormitories and office buildings on the north side of Russell Road, a dining hall. And then their main academic campus is to the south of Russell Road. And down along the Stony Brook is where their athletic fields are. Lot 22, which is in the R2, which is the zoning for the surrounding neighborhood as well, is highlighted with a pink hatchet, hatching, at the 1.6 acre parcel. We were not able to figure out why originally it wasn't included in the E4 zone. It has been owned by the Hunt School for a long time. In the packet of information you'll see, and we concur with what the Hunt School said, that Lot 22 cannot be developed as a single-family home. It has a number of restrictions, some of which are the irregular shape, environmental constraints, excuse me, which include floodplain for the Stony Brook, as well as a 300-foot buffer for a C1 district as well. Excuse me. If the property is rezoned from R2 to E4, the change would basically allow the Hunt School to utilize the property, although they've indicated at this point they don't have any plans. But more importantly, it does allow them to gain additional floor area ratio, or floor area, a new building of about 11,000 square feet, which they could then use sometime in the future. If you recall, the last application that the Hunt School came in, they are quickly approaching their build-out for their campus. So this would allow them some additional breathing room for that. Not a whole lot in our master plan to guide us on some of this. What it really says, in terms of educational institutions, is that we need to balance the institutional needs for new facilities with the impact on the neighborhood. I should point out, we did ask the Hunt School to provide notice to all the neighbors within 200 feet, so that we would be able to hear from the public before we recommend to counsel one way or the other whether the rezoning should occur. And it's just a balancing act. I'll leave it to the Hunt School to talk about what their future plans may be. This is a fairly simple zone change, if you want to recommend it. If you do, what you would be doing is just recommending to counsel that they place Lot 9301, Lot 22, which is the pink shaded lot, into the E4 zone. It's a map change. As you should be aware, that the zoning amendment review committee did meet and discuss this a couple of months ago. They recommended to the board that the change from R2 to E4 be permitted or be adopted. That's a quick summary of the application. Representatives from the Hunt School are here, who I'm sure will amplify a little bit on what I just said. I don't know if board members have questions for me before we turn it over to Mr. Goldman.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Hi, Happy New Year to everybody. I'm Rich Goldman of Drink or Biddle, and I've represented the Hunt School for a very long time. Before I start, I'm going to --
Mr. Goldman, I'm going to ask that to the extent you provide testimony, that you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do. I just want to hand this out before we start, because it's a Google Earth photo.
On Google Earth. I'm not sure if this is -- Yeah, I just, there are people in the audience, so can we at least invite them to come up and look at it?
Well, I just, it's a little bigger than Lee's, so maybe I can. Okay.
Are we going to mark this one A1?
It's applicant one?
Hmm?
Applicant one? How about? Oh, maybe, yeah, make the photo one, and we'll make this two.
Could we give the person in the audience one of these? Because I might be a neighbor.
If, maybe Lee, because that was all that I had, but yeah.
So we have A1, which is a, represented to be a photo from Google Earth, and we have A2, which is the map you just, or the plot you just marked.
Correct.
Now you have the area in yellow instead of red.
Correct. Correct. And a little bigger. So let me just, again, I know Lee's already done this and oriented you, but just so you know, on the map, this yellow is the lot. The green outline is the E4. This yellow is in the R2. I think it was over a year ago, as we were studying the campus, it may have even been when we began the process of the Global Commons, which you all approved and has since been built. We realized that this Lot 22 was essentially an orphan lot. We really didn't know that. We knew it was there, but we didn't realize, in the consciousness of the campus, that this was zoned differently than the campus. And the reason I wanted to give you this photo and the way to orient yourself to the photo of A1, the big green swath on the bottom, which I think is part of, might be part of the golf course, but that goes on the bottom, the big green area. The track is in the center. And we thought this Google map was helpful, because if you see, just to the right of the track, you'll see an open field surrounded by trees. And you can see the white line diagonally across the field. That's this lot line. Right? So for, as long as, I've been there about 26 years, and anybody else who's been there longer, as long as anyone can remember, the Hunt School has owned this lot, has used it as a grass field, and used it for soccer. So it's been used for the school's purposes for all that time. We don't plan any change to its use. We just wanted to rationalize the campus, recognizing, as Lee said, and as you can see, this lot is landlocked. There's no access to a street. It's in the floodplain and the C1 corridor, so no structures can be built here. And it just seems odd. We actually thought it might have been a mistake when the map was originally formulated years ago, that this lot just got omitted. But whether it did or it didn't, you know, our issue today is, we'd like to incorporate this lot into the E4 zone, kind of validate our use of it as a soccer field, which has been going on for, I mean, I'm telling you, at least 25 years that I know of, and probably 50 years. And as Lee mentioned, the benefit to the school of this, in addition to rationalizing the use of the lot, is it will provide an additional small amount of FAR. Now, frankly, in the package of the school, which is over 200,000 square feet of buildings, the 11,000 square feet does not give us an opportunity to go out and build another major building. But what it might do, because we're very close to our limit, is maybe we need a bump out on one of the dorms, or, you know, an area for the kitchen. Small, modest additions that might be needed over time. The Hunt School in the long term is facing, you know, an issue, because it is essentially landlocked in place. And it's a time when, many of you know, the prep schools around the competition are investing in significant improvements in facilities, labs, theaters, you know, all sorts of significant sort of elements to supplement the education. You can't do it anymore with a hallway with a bunch of classrooms. You've got to have the facilities. So we're looking, as we think about long term, we're looking at a campus that's running out of developable space. And that $11,000, $11,000 square feet, frankly, we have no plan for it today, but thinking ahead, we know that that could be a helpful benefit to the school. Obviously, if any building is proposed, we would have to come in for a site plan review. Before I talk on and on, John Brom is here, and he's the headmaster, and he wanted to introduce himself again and give you a few words.
Hello, Chairman Wanda Gunning, and --
Yeah, I'm not sure your mic is picking you up.
Is this not picking up? Right up close, how's that? Great. I swear?
With the, to testify or affirm to testify truthfully. Thank you.
Yes. I wanted to bring greetings to the board and just reintroduce myself, just to tell you about the Hunt School briefly. We have a compact campus of roughly 50 acres, but we are a thriving, healthy institution right now, many happy families and constituents. We do our best to be innovative and supportive of kids, and to prepare the leaders of the future, and to do a good job for our students and our families. The last time I met with this board was when we were planning the Global Commons. And I wanted to let you know what a huge success that building has been. We received some advice from this board and actually implemented the improvements you suggested, and that building has just taken off wonderfully. The kids love it. It's had a profound influence on our teaching and our learning. The technology in the building has really allowed us to advance the way we teach. It's had a great impact on the culture of the school and the social life. And the best part, or one of the best parts, is it's a beautiful building. It's, you might recall that part of the challenge of the building was that it's near the mall. It's kind of a beautiful historic space, and I think it's been fit in beautifully. So if anything, it kind of enhances the sense behind that historic Russell Hall and the view of the mall. And I've actually heard from another number of neighbors that they really think it's a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. So we thank you for your cooperation and advice, and thank you for considering this zoning change.
Thanks, John. So, I mean, I think that's a long and short, but happy to answer questions. You're sort of, it's not like you're voting on an application tonight. What we're asking for is that you consider whether or not you're willing to recommend that the township committee consider this and adopt this zone change, which, as Lee said, is just straightening the map to air that one lot. And we would certainly appreciate your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Oh, and remember, it's the council, not the committee anymore.
Sorry. It's a new year. I thought you changed every other year.
Municipality, yeah. But I could have asked this for Lee, but what exactly, how would this change the ability to build on that? Would it change the ability to build on that parcel at all, changing the zoning?
It would not.
So you're saying nothing can be built on it under the current zoning, but nothing could be built on it?
That's correct. What we believe it does is it, I don't want to say legalizes, but the use that we make of it, which is an educational sports use, would be permitted. But clearly, under the environmental floodplain rules, the C1 stream rules, you can't build structures there. You just can't.
Question for the head of school. The ratio 70 to 30 of day versus boarding students that's cited in the memo, is that historically consistent, or have there been more borders in the past? I'm just trying to get to whether we will see an application for an addition to allow for more boarding students.
No, I don't anticipate that. We certainly don't have any plans for that. And one of the purposes of the Global Commons was to increase our boarding population somewhat with the idea of reducing our day population somewhat. And that's been pretty much how it's worked in terms of our upper school. The population actually has gone down a little bit overall, and the population of day students has declined as we've added a few borders.
Thank you.
Excuse me. There is one other project that's coming around in the cycle. The, when we built the Global Commons, what used to be the Student Center in the Buck Building moved into the Global Commons. The Buck Building was our middle school and our Student Center. So we are coming in with essentially a renovation of that building, not really an expansion. We are enclosing a small upper floor patio, but basically, we want to upgrade the middle school as well. But that's not to expand it or to grow it, it's really just to make it a more modern and great facility, and make use of that space. One of the other -- One of the other uses of that space will be to expand things like the dance program, where you have a little more room to do dance and things of that sort.
Go ahead, David.
This is just for my curiosity. I don't think it really makes a difference to the application. But is there a reason why you decided to request the zoning map be redrawn rather than going to the zoning... You know, asking the council, rather than going to the zoning board for a use variance on this?
Yeah, well, number one, I think it's actually, in my mind, it's really more appropriate to ask for the zoning change because I'd be asking for a use variance to continue using it as a soccer field after 50 years of using it as a soccer field. Something doesn't feel right about that to me. But more importantly, I think it's the right change. In other words, I think that landlocked lot really should not be zoned into complete inutility. That lot today could not be used for any purpose at all under the current zoning. And to me, that's a modest adjustment. It blends it into the existing campus that's been there for 100 years. It just didn't feel like the right thing to do, to seek a variance for something like that.
And it wouldn't give you the FAR you need also?
And that's true. That would not provide some extra FAR. So one of the... You know, we've owned this 1.5-acre lot forever, and we get no benefit from it other than using it for the soccer field. But with the zone change, we actually do get a little bit extra FAR that can be spread through the campus. Not there. We can't do it there. But since we own the whole bigger lot, you know, again, let's say we needed to add a dressing room to the theater, and it was, you know, 20 by 20. Now we have some FAR to do that. Again, as I said, we don't have a plan for expansion, further expansion at this point. But we also, as the board, who has to run the school, has to think ahead a little bit. And if one thinks ahead five years or 10 years, you know, there could be needs that have to be met. So that... I think Alan is right. That's an important difference between that and a variance.
Can I just ask you something? There's always a bit of concern when there's an institutional use on one side of the line and residential on the other. The residential lot next to this has, I think, quite an elaborate drainage system, as I remember. Does your... Do your playing fields drain toward that lot? Or do they drain directly into the...
I think they drain directly towards the Stony Brook. Yeah, there's...
I can't hear you.
Why don't you come up?
Testimony, let's have it. Would you state your name and position?
Michael Chakowsky, Director of Facilities for the Hun School.
And do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do.
And a question is proposed?
So yes. The majority of the playing fields on this picture drains directly into Stony Brook. There is a stormwater across the entire length of the... Yeah. Let me... If I can point it out over here.
Probably beyond your question.
But there is stormwater. It's hard to demonstrate.
Yeah, I couldn't...
Can I see this?
Sure, absolutely.
So there is a stormwater pipe along this edge between the track and the steep slope that comes towards our athletic fields, approximately right here.
We're really talking up here at the higher plane. And that's there to divert water as it flows down from the upper campus.
And then in this corner over here, by this field, there's a small tributary that comes to Stony Brook that drains that stormwater right down into Stony Brook here. So this entire area drains directly into Stony Brook.
The Google map that I gave you, A1, it's one of the amazing things of technology. It shows the houses also. Houses where they are in individual lots. As you see, I mean, the houses are above us. They're down in the floodplain. The water can't go up. It has to go down after the storm.
Right, but what I'm asking is the lot, it would be to the right of this little thing, right? Yeah, which does have...
No, we don't reach back to the supreme order that the water is down to Stony Brook.
Where is that?
It is approximately... I'm trying to cross-reference these two maps. It comes right in here and comes along this border and into Stony Brook.
It's between the two properties, in other words?
Yes, yes, approximately.
So the drainage from this field, which, by the way, is a grass field, so it's actually one of the best things to have for drainage and water quality. To the extent any of it goes this way, it goes into the tributary between the properties and then down to Stony Brook. But also, it has sheet flow towards Stony Brook as well.
And this is actually the lowest point on our campus, right here in this corner.
Yes, that's what I was wondering.
I might also add that it's going to do that, whether it's zoned E4 or R2, and whether we have the kids run on it and play soccer or not. The key is, is we're really not and can't do improvements there. And that's the things that might have an impact on drainage. This is a paper change that ultimately rationalizes the produce and maybe gives us a few square feet of additional area in other parts of the...
What about a turf, artificial turf? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I don't have a crystal ball, but we think that because it's so low there, that probably we can't do an artificial turf. We... I wouldn't rule it out in some point in the future. And that's going to depend on sort of technology and the like. But we have no plan to do that right now.
Okay. Are there other questions? Anyone?
We have a public person.
All right. Hang on just a minute. If there are no more board questions, then let me open it up to the public, if that's all right. And if you could take the microphone and give us your name, tell us what your address is?
Virginia Dingwall, 629 Lawrenceville Road. Oh, Virginia Dingwall, thank you. 629 Lawrenceville Road. And...
You need to be sworn in.
I'm going to ask, to the extent that you're providing testimony, do you swear or affirm to testify truthfully?
I do so swear.
Thank you.
May I go to the map?
Just keep the microphone...
This piece of property is mine. And my only concern with this is that, well, astroturf and further building of fields. Sometime ago, when you did... I've been there 30 years. Sometime ago, when you did the global, whatever it was, I asked if you couldn't put some trees, something like Colorado Blue Spur or something else that's deer-resistant, because my view from here, up this way, is very... I see all the lights, and there had been a number of buildings, but there are no trees to buffer the view. I have trees on my side, but in here, if you're going to turn that all into field and have no trees along the river, it really would be... It would be very helpful, in other words, if you would put some trees in here and not... Since it's floodplain, and not have the... Whatever it is, fields come right down to the edge.
So I can tell you, we have no plans for any clearing. We're not planning to change the shape or size of the fields. And I'm surprised to hear you say this because I'm looking at this Google Earth photo. And when you look along the Stony Brook, there's a fairly wide swath of trees and then up the property boundary, so maybe I'll...
There aren't really trees here. They're... From... Google shows them as much higher than they really are. But a few evergreens along there. Well, I've requested this several times over 30 years, and nothing has been put in. But I shall again request it because it would make a great deal of difference in the views from my property. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, let me close the public session. Is there any further discussion? No?
If not...
This is here for a recommendation to the council for rezoning of the area described. There's no development application proposed, no modification to the site is part of the rezoning. And that's not a planning board matter in any event. So to the extent the board is inclined to recommend it, this would be a recommendation to council that the requested rezoning be enacted.
Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll move that we recommend the zoning change to the council.
Move by Mr. Cohen, is there a second?
Second, Mildred Trautman.
Second by Ms. Trautman. Is there further discussion? Right. One thing I would say is that we always like to have neighbors come, and we like to feel that things have worked out for neighbors and with the Hun School, they have in the past. You might just continue a little discussion with Ms. Dingwall and see...
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
Perhaps shutting the lights a little more or something might help.
We're happy to look at that and do that. We do have some constraints along there about digging because we're so close to the stream and all that. But we'll do the best we can, and we'll talk to her about it.
Thank you. And with that, do you want to read more?
Ms. Burge?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Kremiller?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mayor Lampert?
Yes.
Ms. Spruill?
Yes.
Mrs. Trautman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I do appreciate it. Do you want to keep Eileen the exhibit? This is not really an application for evidence, but up to you. I don't mind leaving it if you... No, okay.
Just one question. Does Google Earth actually see the lot lines?
It has databases, so it actually can add the lot lines. If you have the good Google Earth, probably not the home one, but the good one. It can tell you acreage. It's amazing technology. It's really amazing, so...
Right, or the state line. Okay, thank you. If we have no further business, I think...
I move to a John.
Thank you, Ms. John.
Second.
So second by Mayor Lampert. All those in favor of joining?
That's right, Mildred.
I said I'd be home in an hour.
I like that.
Look at that.
That is pretty cool. I should have taken last minute.